Holy Father, we are thankful for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for the things that you've already done, the things that you're going to do. We thank you, Lord God, for your grace and your mercy, your love and your favor. We pray for those who are here. We ask you to bless their families and their friends. Lord, we ask that you give us direction that glorify your name in doing the business of this city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammons.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free. Absent. Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the Adopted Bojor City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the President Pro Tem barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting. Counsel, we have one add-on request for today. I don't have any ceremonial matters, Mr. Mayor. Do you have anything? Okay. We have one add-on request today from the city attorney. Unfinished Business Number Two, Adopt a Resolution, Order and Call in a Special Election to be Held in the City of Bojor City, State of Louisiana, to Vote Upon the Adoption of Amendments to the Current City Charter of the City of Bojor City, Making Application to the State Bond Commission and Providing for Other Matters in Connection Therewith. And this item is requested to be added by the city attorney based on the recent court verdict. It's a first and final reading.
Make a motion that we do the add-on.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience on this item?
David Crockett, 653 Du Main Drive, Bojor City, Louisiana. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Bojor City Council, you should add term limits resolution to your agenda. Yesterday, for the public in general, yesterday's ruling by the 26th JDC for Rida Van Damis was successfully filed by Ms. Cassie Rogers. We from the Bojor Term Limits Coalition believe that it's time for Bojor City Council to finally put this to bed, to quit wasting the Bojor City taxpayers' money on frivolous lawsuits and issues. I'll explain that in a little bit more detail. Five Bojor City councilmen filed a motion for a suspensive appeal to avoid being held in contempt after this meeting if they did not pass the resolution that we're talking about today. The Bojor City Term Limits Coalition Attorney representing Ms. Rogers will request the court set for an expedited hearing. It's very unfortunate for the citizens of Bojor City. This is no different than expensive lawfare that's being used against President Trump today. We see it on the news all the time. This is just frivolous lawfare. This is just a delay also, and we saw this yesterday, or yeah, yesterday, at the Charter Commission. This is a delay in order for the Charter Commission to pass their own version of term limits. We have intelligence from some of the people on the Charter Commission that that's what their attempt is to do. They're trying to compete against this version of term limits so that they can get rid of the grandfather, or the the making aware that some of the councilmen that are here today cannot run again. So they're doing this in order to compete with our version of term limits, and I have that from a pretty good source. So, on the people's behalf, it's time to move past this. I recommend that you put this on the, on the, on your agenda, and I support this. And of course, I mean, I think that all of you should support this so the people will get their chance to vote for term limits. And thank you for putting this on the, on the agenda.
Let me see, did we do ceremonial matters?
We have one more.
Just state your name and address, please.
Cassie Rogers, 4914 General Sterling Price Place, Bojor City, Louisiana, 71112. Before I get started, I would like to ask you, Mr. Acting President, to please allow me to complete my thoughts. I promise I won't be long. I just want to make sure I don't run through what I have to say so that everybody can hear me, citizens and you as well. May I be granted, if my time goes over, just a few extra seconds?
Three minutes is our rule.
May I be granted some additional time? It won't be long, I promise.
Counsel, would you like to grant it? Or you want to vote on that, or what?
I don't think you can vote on it. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, so, just stick to three minutes.
I'll do my best. So I'd like to start off with good morning, councilman, Mr. Acting President, Mr. Mayor, and the citizens of Bojor City. I ask that all, I ask for all of you for a few moments to set your pens down, do your best to eliminate any distractions, and at the very least, listen to what I have to say. This is important, and I need you to hear me. As the sun set on our beautiful city last night, the citizens had hope. And as this morning, when the sun rose, for the first time in a long time, I felt at peace. However, it was short-lived. As I stand here this afternoon, our hope is crushed and our peace seems impossible. If only that were true, but our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, shows us, shows up time and time again to remind us that nothing is impossible. Friday should have never happened. But because it did, the citizens deserve to understand what exactly happened. For those of you that may not know, there were four lawyers in the courtroom on Friday. I was the only citizen standing in the box, so to speak, before the audience. Somehow along the way, I became the face of this for whatever reason. But it should have never happened. The lawyer that the Term Limits Coalition is paying for ran our side of the aisle. Not one of you have asked the citizens, to my knowledge, is it okay if I use your money to defend what we think is right, even though 2,935 people of this city have said what they wanted? If for five seconds you would step back from yourself and remember that the people that voted for you and the people of your district are who you actually work for, I would ask you to do that right now. I want to thank the mayor, Chris Smith, and Brian Hammons for one thing. I have never done anything like Friday, but guess what I did on Friday? I want to thank them because I didn't feel alone. Unfortunately, so that the citizens understand, there were four lawyers, one for Mr. Jacobs, which is understandable, but again, costs the city money. One for five of you guys, which would be Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Darby, Mr. Maggio, and Mr. Free. But on our side of the table, the side of the citizens, we had the lawyer sit with, the lawyer chose, wanted to sit with us that represented Tommy Chandler, Chris Smith, and Brian Hammons.
Mr. Rogers, I interrupted.
We are divided.
I bet your time has expired, okay?
Thank you. We are divided. So, let's come back together. We are one city. We've proven time and time again we can overcome things like this. Let's do that today, please.
All right, need a motion to approve today's agenda.
Hi, my name's Alice Forhere, 504 One Highway Eighty, Houghton, Louisiana. And I wanted to speak about this being added on to the, I'm really grateful for that motion. And I also want to say that if it would have just been left to lie with the judge's decision, which was the right decision, you know, it would have ended up smoothing everything out. But at this point, your all's actions end up furthering everybody's suspicions about why that Charter Commission was established. And that's all I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, how we can approve today's agenda? Do we have a motion?
I think we have to vote on that.
We got to vote on the.
We already have a motion in a second?
But you got to vote.
Got to vote on it.
To add the add-on, and it has to be unanimous.
Okay. I'm sorry, Phyllis, what's the add-on again?
The add-on is unfinished business number two, adopt resolution of ordering and calling a special election to be held in the City of Bojor City, State of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to the current city charter of the City of Bojor City, make an application to the State Bond Commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And there's a motion on the table by Mr. Smith and Mr. Hammons, and you've already allowed to public comment.
Okay, what number is that?
That's going to be number two.
First page.
It's going to be under two. It's not on the agenda right now because it's not added, but it'll be number two under unfinished business.
I got you. All right, do we have a motion?
There's a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Hammons.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, did yours pop up?
Yeah, it goes.
Motion fails.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Thank you for some of the changes in vote and that. At least, some people are seeing the fallacy of what we just went through. But I want to comment on why your agenda now is flawed. For the benefit of the council, the 26th JDC addressed all the issues that were filed on behalf of five councilmen opposing term limits in favor of Cassie Mae Rogers. All of them were addressed and all were denied. Mr. Colb's filings on behalf of the five dissenting councilmen now, less than that, and thank you very much, exception of prematurity. City Council rejected two propositions presented to the council. It was actually three. Our attorney just did not have the update. The judge concluded that it appeared that any additional submissions to the council would simply deny petitioner the right to seek redress. He heard the bond commission's schedule, and he said Mr. Colb's filing was a circular argument in nature and in that there would always be another council meeting that you would try to delay for. No cause of action was the second thing. If the petitioner states a cause of action on any ground or portion of the demand, the exception should generally be overruled, the judge said. Considering the petition and its efficiency, he said, it was found that the petitioner had cause of action. Mr. Colb argued unconstitutional, yet when asked by the court, Colb himself maintained that the proposals as written were not unconstitutional. Mr. Colb argued that Montgomery, Darby, and Williams would be forced to resign their seats since their terms were greater than the three terms that were allowed by the petition. The judge found this argument disingenuous. That's quite a rebuttal to a sitting attorney in that the propositions read that no person who has been elected to serve as mayor or councilman for more than three terms shall be eligible for an additional term. So he called that disingenuous. So these propositions do not violate Louisiana statute, which says that no amendment or appeal of a home rule charter shall shorten the term for which an official was already elected. Five Bojor City councilmen were, up to this point, wasting your tax dollars and now fighting the right of the people to decide what kind of term limits they want. I said it earlier, this is clearly just a way that some of the city council are delaying because they want to hold power. We have one or two of these councilmen that have been discussing running for mayor. Who would let you run your city? Who would let you run when you're fighting the will of the people and you're wasting the people's tax dollars? I've made arguments about that for council meeting after council meeting. I think people are very tired of it. It's very obvious. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Cassie Rogers, 4914 General Sterling Price Place, Bojor City, Louisiana, 71112. I'm glad I have another opportunity to speak on this because what is happening here is what some of us will call, or I will call, fraud, waste, and abuse. It was deemed by a judge in the court of law that the arguments that were rendered by the five councilmen who are fighting us tooth and nail, that there was no reason for the fight. They awarded, in a historical moment in Bojor City, they awarded the citizens the power to put something on the ballot because you refuse to, even though the charter tells you you must, you shall, however it's worded. I encourage you to go home today and think about that. None of you, well, excuse me, those of you who continue to fight the citizens on this, you are wrong. The judge said you were wrong. We proved it in court. The judgment, we won. It was in our favor. You can continue and continue and continue to fight us, but I, for one, we are paying for our lawyer. You are not. You're not paying for the lawyer. If you, if that, if it means that much to you, I encourage you to get a private lawyer, if that's possible. Have someone represent yourself and put your money where your mouth is because we have spoken. We're not only paying for the lawyer on our side, we're paying for your lawyers too. That's not fair. Stop. Stop.
All right, counsel, still on approve today's agenda. Any questions? Cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, we need a motion to approve the amendments of August 27th, 2024, Redwood Council Meeting, in dispense with the reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Public hearing actions on unfinished business.
Adopting ordinance to contract with Half Associates Incorporated to provide FEMA Community Rating System Program Analysis Services associated with the National Flood Insurance Program. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency, to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bojor City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace an 18-inch gravity sewer main segment at 4970 Barksdale Boulevard at a cost of $441,331.45 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I do. Ben, is this the one down in my district, right in front of the shopping center?
This is right there near Sunflower and Zaxby's.
Okay, all right. Do they, do they send you a little bit more detailed invoice than just emergency repair and then their lump sum?
We get a very detailed.
Okay, all right. If you wouldn't mind sending, I'd like to look at that. I know it was very extensive. They were out there for a long time, but I wasn't expecting almost a half a million dollars on this.
Understood.
So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to look, I'd like to look at that invoice if you would mind.
I will send it your way.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the retail sale of low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a proposed event center located at 140 Plaza Loop, Bojor City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance levying ad valorem taxes on all properties subject to taxation by the City of Bojor City, Louisiana for the year 2024 and providing for the manner of assessment and collection thereof. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I was going to make a statement real quick. Phyllis had done this for me just so that everybody is clear and understands that we are going to roll back the millage to 21.5 mils. Is that correct, Phyllis? So that there will not be an increase in what the people pay in taxes. And that's coming from the city council here at Bojor. So, just for the record, and right now, it's 23 and some change.
Angela, 23.58.
Point five eight, so.
22.58 right now.
22, sorry.
And so it'll be 21.5 after this.
So anyway. Clear up any misunderstanding there.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance allocating $37,927.96 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund for 120 water to facilitate the required notification and data collection for the EPS's LDH's lead and copper rule improvement initiative. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to eliminate one vacant laborer one position in the Solid Waste Department for Public Works, change one vacant laborer one position in Solid Waste to Assistant Superintendent, and hire or promote from within and backfill any vacancies created, and to amend the Public Services and Sanitation and General Fund budgets to transfer $2,532 from the Solid Waste Department to Public Works Department for salaries and benefits. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the Barksdale South 24-inch water main and consolidation project with an increase in project cost of $474,008.78 and adding an additional 60 days. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Yes. Can someone just explain, I mean, this is an enormous change order.
Yeah, it is. It's big. A lot to unpack here, but that project's coming to a close, Councilman Hammons. So, just to kind of back up a little bit and remind folks that there was an original allocation by the council of seven and a half million, and that project was about five million of that covered by the Water Sector Program grant. When we opened bids on that, the bids came in right around 5.1 million. So, still well within the available funds that were allocated for construction. The big item on this list is around $350,000 of unanticipated expense that was associated with KCS. We even worked with the administration of the mayor's office to send letters to them explaining and requesting some reprieve on those costs, but that was outside of our control. We have an agreement within their permit. They provide their inspectors at nearly two grand a day for one, and I think we had three out there. So, to give you some indicator of where the bulk of those costs were, that was the major component. And we have, we- And we have, we planned on there being like a little more than, you know, $100,000 worth of that within our work. It's not uncommon for us to work around railroads and dealing with that. But that was the big piece. CenterPoint Energy also required us to put some matting over their infrastructure that we were crossing, which was another $100,000. So just between those two entities alone, that's where the bulk of that came from. There's some minor stuff in there. We had some utility locate things out there, sub 20,000, pretty, you know, expected for a project of this size. But that's the major bits. And we worked tirelessly with the administration to do all we could to consolidate that. But working with the railroads can be complicated.
Are they gonna, they gonna dress all these ditches up?
Yes, sir.
Reseed them, everything like that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rich's liking, so everything drains down through there? And, because we already have enough drainage problems as there is on 71 and all the ditches.
We're monitoring that very close, and we won't pull them off the hook until it's to our liking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Questions, counsel? All right, please cast your vote. Any questions from the audience? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to fill a Labor One position in the Solid Waste Division and backfilling any position this creates. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of one position due to a resignation and to backfill any position this creates by hiring or promoting from within the Bojor City Marshals Office. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a risk management specialist due to a resignation in the Bojor City Legal Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Do we have any reports? Mayor, you got anything today?
Oh, tomorrow is 9/11, and the city and KBV will be having a memorial in front of the fire station. But if it's raining, Chief Brad Ziggone has made it available where the trucks will be pulled out. And inside the bay, we'll still have the memorial inside there. So we'll still be able to honor the guys on 9/11. So that'll be tomorrow at nine o'clock.
All right, do we have any announcements? Leading the adjourn.